Five o'clock. Order, is this yours? Okay, and shall we rise to pledge of life? Yeah, this is gonna drive me crazy, cuz it keeps. Yeah, it's like. Now I can't even get it open. You gotta go. Okay, thank you. See, I'm not an apple person. Okay, let's roll call. President, we'll call it here.
Here.
Herman Gasparo.
Here.
Lynda Johnson. Trusty Locknow.
Here.
Charlie Manning.
Here.
Liz Waterfall.
Here.
And we also have Travis Wells and Chief Sherrod. And our light housekeeper. And searches, I almost called you Rob, I don't know why. Do we have anybody on Zoom that would like to make any public comment? And anybody in the room that would like to make public comment? No public comment. Okay, um, we'll go right to the November minutes. I did find a couple of errors, so do we have a motion and then we can address the errors?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of November fourteenth, twenty twenty four. With any, uh, any corrections that we agree upon.
We enjoy the second. Okay, and. The errors that I found just, uh, on, um. Well, it's page four on my thing. Um. Or page five, uh, where it was review and possibly take action on resolution twenty twenty four dash R zero nine. Um, where it says trustee Locknow motion to approve. Uh, you, you copied in twenty twenty four R zero eight and to designate reserves, so it should have been to, um.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, resolution to set the village schedule of fees, deposits, and forfeitures. I just think it got copied down wrong. That was. And then I just have a question. Um, we had her, uh, motion to close the public hearing on the budget, but did we have a motion to open it?
The same. We don't even motion it open.
Oh, okay.
No, yeah.
Okay, that was just a question. But yeah, that was the only, only thing I saw in the minutes that needed approval. So, uh. All in favor to approve the minutes with the corrections?
Hi.
Opposed?
Hi.
Abstained. So. Six, four, one opposed, and zero abstained.
No opposed.
I think it was just a delay.
Oh, is that a delay or you?
Yeah, it's a delay.
That was a delay? I'm sorry. Then that.
I had the same reaction, but.
Because I was like, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so motion passes seven zero zero, okay. Uh, we'll go right into new business, um, with trustee Locknow, uh, personal finance, so finance and insurance committee.
All right, well, we had three things at PFIC, um, on the third, um. Uh, one of them that we approved to bring forward to, uh, the full board, uh, purchase from Ewald. Uh, Chrysler Jeep Dodge and Ram, the twenty twenty three Ram twenty five hundred tradesman DP two two five. Um, we didn't really care so much about the year, it's five thousand dollars cheaper than the other one, which is right next door to it. Um, Travis, correct me if I'm wrong on any of this stuff as I explained it, cuz obviously I was out of town on Zoom, but, um. Obviously, uh, this is, uh, gonna be a multi-purpose vehicle, the, the water, uh, truck we have now is having transmission problems. They're not very confident, um, in, in its use, that's one thing. Um, two, we've got some ARPA funds that, uh, staff would rather have us, uh, put it towards a couple of big things that we're doing like this. Um, this also has the ability to put, uh, a whole bunch of stuff, um, within the vehicle. Um, it's got, uh, it's tough to see, but on the sides, they've got, uh, built-in, uh, sort of cabinetry and things like that. Um, also, um. Summer staff is using their own vehicle, and that's sort of a risk, and we don't feel it's appropriate. So this is sort of a, probably getting a jump on a vehicle, uh, you can make a case. If you really wanted to, that maybe we don't need it, but, uh, at this point in time, I think it's, uh, makes sense. Um, also, staff could use this to, uh, go out, uh, on out-of-town, uh, meetings. And things like that versus using their own cars. I know staff, uh, some of them aren't real confident in their vehicles, uh. And putting them on the road, especially certain times of the year, but, long story short, this is gonna be a multi-use vehicle. That's gonna, uh, help us with a lot of things, uh, we'll be able to put a plow on it as well. And then there will get another backup there when needed, um, so, um, anybody for PFIC?
It also had the tool package.
Yeah, yeah. Yep, 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 so you correct the tool package, you know, which is where they can store all their stuff and haul stuff, um. Uh, without pulling out the, the one ton and, and all that.
Go back and forth with some too.
Yeah, multi-use vehicle.
So, it's just one of those things that, uh, you know, we, we felt made sense, so, um, I'll make a motion, um. That we approve the purchase, unless there's any questions.
Are you looking at the twenty-three or twenty?
Twenty-three, the twenty-three, yeah, for five thousand less.
So, Rob, Rob.
Yeah.
We're gonna pay cash for this?
Yeah, I'll do the ARPA funds, yeah.
Okay, or because this document said amount of finance, I was just. Make sure, okay.
Good, good question.
Good enough.
Yeah, no problem, no problem.
So what is the price then?
It's, uh, sixty-two, one forty-five, um, at the bottom, um.
So the ten thousand is already subtracted?
Correct, correct, I'm, you know, we don't pay, uh, taxes as a municipality, so I would assume that. Everything we have here is, is, is what it'll be, um, so.
But I, I guess, uh, so you fifty-eight, nine fifteen plus four hundred is fifty-nine, something, what's the extra three thousand I'm just missing? Like, there's not, there's a gap.
You know what, Travis, I don't think you included everything. Is there some of the plow package in here?
No, I believe, uh. I don't know that, uh. Oh, sorry, I didn't notice accessory on the bottom, but I bet if you see the twelve eight two eight.
Oh, there it is, okay. Gotcha. Gotcha, okay, so that's the outfit items.
So you'd subtract ten from that, you've got two thousand eight.
Yep, and then you add that back in, and, yeah, so that's where we're at, so, sorry.
Thank you.
No problem.
And Rob, the only other question I had is, I'm assuming we didn't shop around?
We did, yeah, we did, we looked at a couple of different vehicles, um.
Different dealers?
Yeah, yeah, this was overall the best one, um, I think. Let's see, so this is the, this is obviously the Ram. The shit, one of them was like almost seventy thousand dollars, and obviously that made no sense. Um, and then one of them, by the time you would have outfitted, it would have been in the middle sixties, so, yeah. No, we did, we did, thank you.
And then there's only certain dealerships that deal with, you know, municipalities.
For what it's worth, we've purchased three, words from Ewald for our business, and they've been outstanding as far as service.
That's right, yeah, yeah, this, this, this is a Ram, but, a-again, it was one of those that, for everything. That we looked at had, um, the best outfit, and again, it's older, but, you know, we, we were trying to save a little bit of money there.
Well, and if they would have had to order.
Yeah.
We'd have to wait away next year, so.
Yeah.
It was available.
Correct.
It's ready to go.
Yeah.
Drive it out with the lot.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
All right, um, I guess unless somebody on PFIC, I'll make the motion, um, that the village board, um. Authorizes staff to, uh, purchase the twenty twenty-three Ram twenty-five hundred tradesman DP two two five. From Ewald Chrysler Jeep Dodge and Ram, which includes the itemized accessories outfit, uh, of the twelve eight twenty-eight, uh. That hurts.
Second man.
Oh, pardon me?
I have one question. We're buying this after the first of the year, is that correct?
Um, Travis?
No.
No, we're trying to buy it this year.
Yeah.
To allocate to ARPA funds.
Yeah.
Okay, so. That's being offset by the insurance, right? It's already paid for in the budget. The insurance. Correct. It's been backed or did, oh, you brought this up?
Yeah, so, so the insu- the insurance, we don't have any insurance for the balance of this year. Um, it would just be, it was already in for next year, we'd anticipated possibly doing.
Well, she indicated that if you bought a truck.
Correct.
In twenty twenty-five, no insurance.
Correct, we could have ruled that out, but. We wanted to use the ARPA funds this year and not get into kind of issues with.
But if we'd like to check on the thirty-first and, and deliver payment on the third or whatever. Yeah, I'm sure. Does that save a grand? It's real money.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, we can, I can ask, and Nancy. I follow with our.
Okay, good point, yeah. Okay, so let's try and do that. You write that down as a takeaway, thank you, appreciate that, yeah.
Okay.
All right, so I made the motion, Herb had the second. Any other discussion? Any other questions?
Okay, did you draw all of them?
We, we haven't done it, we're still, still discussing, I'm just seeing if anybody, any other discussion here. Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Right.
Opposed? Abstained, motion passes. Okay.
All right, and I'll try to explain the next one as best I can, and Travis, if you. Again, I was on my Zoom out of, out of the area, but, uh, so HydroCore, um, helps, uh, municipalities with. Making sure that, um. The water connections are properly, uh, done according to DNR and state regulations. Um, Scott had shared with us at PFIC that, um, as you go through this. That he and Tom can do the residential part of it, so that part of it that is shown in here. Um, and has a cost to it, uh, they don't anticipate that being on us, that they can do it, it's more the commercial. Um, portion of it, which on page twenty-two, twenty-three of eighty-seven. Has, uh, about forty commercial connections, um. And they're gonna try to do those over the next year and change, they're gonna give us two years to pay it, the fifty-three twenty-eight. So we can write two checks at twenty-six sixty-four, they're not charging us any kind of interest charges or anything like that. But, um, it's something that we have to do to make sure that the water department and our commercial customers are in compliance. There are some examples of, um. What they had a couple pages above, like twenty-one, where they, uh. See if anybody's gotta adjust things and bring their, uh, hoses and attachments, uh. In, into compliance. Um, I wish I was better at explaining it, but that's basically what it is. Going around to the commercial folks in the village, I'm sure mo- mainly Johnson Wax, uh, SE Johnson. Being our biggest, and, um, so there you have it, so that's gonna cost. Uh, again, twenty-six sixty-four in twenty-five and twenty-six, and they're gonna do it. What they think is over a year and change to get it done, so. Any, uh.
That's the only cost, we don't have anything, because.
Yeah, they showed the residential too, if we'd wanna take that on, but, again, skip. When, when, uh, when, uh, Scott said that he and Tom can do that, I, uh. Breathe a sigh of relief, because yes, everybody sees that, that's eighteen thousand dollars, otherwise if we would contract that out. But they don't have the, uh, equipment and the, and expertise to do the commercials end of it.
Certified.
Yeah, and right, good point, Liz, you're right, they're not certified in that, that part of it, so. So I will again make a motion that the village enlists, uh, for the commercial project. Fees only HydroCore, um. And the water connection and inspections.
Okay, all in favor?
Right.
Opposed?
Right, no, I, I. If, if I am opposed to anything, I'll say nay, not I, okay?
Okay.
All right, now.
Abstained.
All right, sorry.
Motion passes.
And so the third thing in here, uh, that staff brought to us, because again, in the, um. Taking a look at, uh, capital and taking a look at the village, uh, facilities. And looking at things that, uh, they found that are probably what, Travis, about fifteen, twenty years old? As far as when the previous board looked at. Facilities and the use of facilities and, and where people would be housed. Um, probably getting to a point where a couple of things, um. We have some roofs that need to be done, which again. I'll be the first to say roofs are cheaper than buildings, I get that, but, um, you know, we don't have great places to hold, uh, our voting. Uh, we have, um, vehicles, expensive vehicles, especially our loader that will be outside. Um, so for a lot of reasons, um. We have, um, decided with staff, and staff has enlisted, um. This, uh, group from, uh, Excel Engineering to sort of put together, um. Plans, um, and we've already submitted some, correct, Travis? There's some stuff we already got on hand over the years that other boards have looked at. And sort of trying to get a feel for what a village, uh, uh, building would look at, look like. Um, a- and to, to, to be smart about that, um. We'd rather be on the front end of that than years later, at the same time, um, you know. There could be, um. Let's just say, people interested in the community that may or may not give us a dollar or zero dollars, but, um. That, that have shown some interest in maybe, um. You know, like other communities, again, that is not anything other than, uh. Than what I said and nothing more to it, but, um, we did at PFIC approve, uh, enlisting Excel Engineering. This time and material is not to exceed, Travis, you've sort of had a feeling we'd come in possibly below that. Um, but that's what this is for, is to take a look at an all-in village, um, village facility. Um, over on the village grounds, um, Travis, would you like to elaborate or explain a little bit more to everybody?
Yeah, um, so department has kind of had. Some information on what they need to work, they want to be, um, you know, comfortable, they need to. Okay, or be comfortable and keep up with, um. I have some DPW, it's totally out of. Well, um, so adding a lot of things that needed to be undone, so they ended it together. Now, at this point in the process, um. You file an agreement with Excel Engineering, start providing some three-D looks, looks of site, how a building would look from the outside. Different styles, and that's gonna give you the price point of the building as a whole. As well as sometimes now with some three-D modeling, you can get looks inside of the building as well, so, um, sometimes that's an option as well, so. It just depends on how many times you're going to go back and forth with, you know. Uh, engineer, hey, I don't want this, I don't want this, I don't want this, so if it's an easier pick. You know, it'll be simple, and, you know, we have not put in, you know, we're not having. Our things here, we're not gonna be like, well, I'm having a huge, we're looking to have some ADA compliance, voting, easier. Accessibility office space and housing all our equipment that's outside, because. Cold weather doesn't do well with outside equipment, so, um, it'd be a cold wind as well, so.
Are our buildings ADA compliant, yes or no?
Yes.
Okay, and, uh, are there, uh, municipalities around the country that have been sued over that?
One in the north of us, tells orders.
Okay. So.
Is that settled in the mouth, do you know? Not being ADA compliant to be able to access voting, um.
They're specific.
What was the settlement? I do, I do not. But they, they, they did not win, they had to build off, the price was on top of the settlement, just buying up, doing a whole new building as well. They had to build a new building and pay whatever the price was.
I'm trying to say, well, on file, um, years ago, you know, there was a. Inspection of our current. Building that showed a lot of things that were.
Yeah.
Structurally safe.
Yeah, um, DPW has a risk of fire, um, just because of the building, um, there's a manhole for all the. Things are sinking and laying, and they have to clean it out themselves, they don't have materials or, um, that zones or, uh. Fire safety in the walls, the, the equipment that's in there, so you get a fire and it wouldn't stop because there's not that protection of firewalls. Uh, same with the building, it's not structurally made for an office, so, uh, floors are starting to bend, that's what the report has said. Um, and the building's starting to, like, lean a little bit because of the foundation is only coming down a little bit. That study is in the office, uh, I think I offered two things to read, I think one and two is from twenty-ten. Um, but yeah, there's a lot of things that are just not in compliance, so it's, it's, um, you know, Monica and I have. Seen, obviously, Monica longer, uh, especially with the ADA stuff, it's very, very difficult to watch, and I don't know if some of you have seen, but it's just very. It's not, it's not easy, it's not, it's not welcoming either, to someone either.
I was, um. In the office one day and the, for early voting, I had just voted. And there was three people that, um, brought their grandmother to vote, she was in a wheelchair. And they struggled to get her in, but she wanted to be in the building and do it. Herself, of course, and so it was, it was dismaying to see that.
On the threshold?
Yeah, they had to, you know, like, you had to get the chair over, and it was, it was embarrassing to her, her face was red. It was an embarrassment, it, and it's, it's, um, limiting to a person's feeling of self-worth. It does not, not, not a good thing. It was disturbing.
Is the approach to, uh, this study? Um, is it to consolidate? Number of departments under the same roof?
Yeah, yeah.
And so there wouldn't be facilities spread out, they'd be centralized?
The PD would join up, uh, DPW would join up as well, um, and, uh, the garage. We haven't worked out a bit of our space, but most likely keep it kind of in the corner where the, the pole barn is. Um, just so it's not so invisible and it's all kind of off the way and not involved in our team.
Uh, they should actually, well, the building needs that a lot.
Looks that heat, yeah.
But heat, what comes up? You know?
Imagine, yeah, the heat is, yeah, and obviously, you know, the, the time comes with, though, the dream more profits, um. You know, being able to host meetings where people can come voice their opinions. So, and having that space, I would not go to a different facility as well, be proud of, you know, welcome to one point, here's our building, here's a municipal building. Can allow to host those meetings to form the residence, um, what is going on too?
So then I get, I'm sorry.
No, please, go ahead, follow, follow.
You start. Uh, so I gather that, that staff has put together or at the committee level some criteria. For like square footage, or there's some rough parameters, that's what's being assessed by.
I, um, so we had kind of talked about the price point, the CIP had timed that, and then. I said, what look, and, you know, keeping it below. Four million is the goal, um, obviously.
How many million?
Four million is the goal, um, so it's, um, it's cheaper than what the municipalities do, and. Obviously, Rob has stated, there's some, some things in the works that just aren't up again, and but I can't. At least that's a room, but being done on that end as well, so, um, there's just working pieces to this. And this is just the first step, we're not spending four million dollars, uh. Obviously, it shows in the CIP, that's an option, but it's a road now to show what the village can do and to, and to the. Uh, to the borrowing of, um, the borrowing of the levy.
And this in no way commits us to, this is, you need an engineering study.
Yeah.
In order to take the next step.
Yeah.
And have any kind of intelligent discussion about what your steps might be, whether you agree with it or not, you know?
Correct, yeah, it, it would show, you know, we can get as many designs as we want, I mean, you know, say, hey, this is. The one the village is comfortable saying, yeah, that's, let's do it, and that's, that's the one, so.
What was the estimated square foot required?
I have to look at the report, um, that I sent to Excel Engineering, uh, but. I, I can't get a number off the top of my head, I assume it's, uh, there's a wishlist of things, I cut something out that. DPW kind of wanted, and I'm thinking, no, it's not, so. Sorry that Scott is not here, but yeah, there's just something that, you know, we're not, we're not looking for much, we're, this is very, I mean. Fair minimum, and I've seen some studies that the town, Village Merton had done one for almost three million dollars. Then they're smaller than us, so it's very doable to keep it under the million, four million dollar range.
This was financed through bonds?
Correct, yeah, it would be part of the, um, the villages kind of look at borrowing for the first time in twenty-twenty-six. Um, indicated by the CIP, that's a few on the website, showing that, you know, we're taking that first step, cuz. Obviously, water mains aren't gonna pay for themselves, that's what we have in water budgets as well as, um. Reserve, so, um, so first step forward to kind of taking action in the village.
We're, we're sort of running out of. The sweet spot that we had for quite a long time, it seems. You know, but that's just my opinion, other people might debate the others.
What's the sweet spot?
Uh, I, I mean, the facilities we have, facilities we have, the no borrowing.
No borrowing, that's all.
Oh, I get it, I get it, I get it, but even, even if you said, hey, this wasn't on the table, you know, no fun.
No, I understand, the ADA thing is very important.
Yeah.
No doubt about it.
You know.
We have to have accommodations.
Yeah.
And I get that, and, yeah, I think it's a good idea to put expensive equipment under the roof.
Yeah.
And maybe in turn to heat up to fifty.
It's gonna be part of a, a capital improvement program, is that what it'd be? And, uh, it doesn't have to be part of a referendum?
Yeah, because if you, we have the ability to borrow as a municipality, so, yeah, it doesn't have to be part of a referendum or anything like that.
Okay.
Does not.
Does not.
Does not. You know. I, I sometimes sit here and I go, man, am I part of a group? I'll just say myself, though, but, uh, that is maybe doing too much all at one time, and some people can say, jeez, all you guys wanna do is spend money, but. Like you just said, Charlie, you know, we got ADA issues, we have, uh. Other building issues, um, and we've run it out as far as we can, and then to the water. You know, I don't even wanna say anything about the water, cuz we've been lucky that we haven't had anything in a long time, um, probably almost this whole year. I think the last one was right out on, off of Mar- Maribor, which is the end of my street. Um, and so, when you can't see things broken, you sometimes wonder why people are spending money on it, but. If we, if we don't, we could have a year like we had. Twenty twenty-three and, you know, keep losing water on top of it, so, it's one of those things where. I'm of the opinion we have to do this stuff, but I guess we'll have that discussion as things come in and go forward. So.
This truly is the, the first step of trying to.
Yeah.
An informed position on whether or not this is what it is.
Yeah.
How much it would cost.
Yeah.
And whether or not, uh. We're able to move forward with it or not, that other in- input.
Correct.
Travis, I'm just curious, have you had the opportunity to go to some of these smaller communities and see the buildings that they put up?
Those next to the one that they put up, yeah.
Yeah, but any other ones besides that?
Uh, no, the one that, um, it's kind of replicating honors, it's a kewaskum, um, so she has sent some design of what theirs looks like. Uh, other than that, they didn't. DPW that was joining up, the gallery that was joining up, so it's a little different, but it's very similar to them, when they everything on your one room. Uh, other than the fact that they just had a little bit more needs than we do, um, but it's very similar to what she kind of told me, so, um. A little bit, I hear you.
Yeah, I'm curious, yeah, I'm seeing, I've only been to a few other communities and just to see what they have.
Yeah, yeah.
They all have new buildings.
Yeah.
You have a house. Yeah.
Uh, the building's gonna last longer than, you know, by the time we buy, we pay off the bargain, I mean, the building.
Yeah.
Last way longer than what we've got now, and buy and invest in something that's not working to continue, you know. The future, I mean, we talked about in the budget committee as well, and the village board being a rebellion budget for the future. Not, we're not talking about now, we're talking about a future for residents to continue to come in the village and be proud of. This is a facility and the roads and infrastructure that they perceive, so. Um, I think it's a big first step to show, you know, this is the first thing people really see in your community. Your municipal building, your, your campus, as some call it, too.
So, what means, the compensation for the, um, lump sum fee, how is that being paid?
Just out of, um. Just, just out of our regular expenses.
Not out of ARPA?
No.
Um. Okay, I've been looking at the alternative, it didn't, uh, yes or no? On the agreement?
You're referring to?
Um.
As far as the lump sum?
It says alternative, it says to be determined. But if you have sign lists, something should be tagged.
Yeah, so, we're, what's, um, the email on that first page, um. It talks about that the lump sum wouldn't be paid until I'm there, kind of, where she doesn't know if it's. Iron and steel, I could see that as well, and she didn't see it, when we talked to one of my father, so we wouldn't go with lump sum.
Okay. All right.
All right, I'll make the motion that, uh, the village engage. And enter into an agreement with Excel Engineering for the purpose of, uh. Coming up with the scope as described in, uh, section one of the agreement on page one.
Okay.
Okay, then.
Go ahead, Charlie.
I think he seconded.
Oh, did you?
But Linda, Linda got.
Linda was a little faster, he had the delay.
All in favor?
All right.
Hi.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes.
Hey.
Okay.
So, I have, I think.
All right, thank you, Rob, um, communications and community relations, trustee Johnson.
All right, so our committee, uh, was tasked with updating the village resident guide, um, that is in your packets. Um, we are finished with that, uh, the last thing we talked about was. How to get this into the hands of new residents, so in the back of the local magazine every month, um, there is a list of houses that are sold. So, knowing that the office gets that, we were wanting to have, um, note cards made up. Um, with probably a picture of a white house on it, and just have the office, um, anytime a house is built. Send, uh, note cards to the new resident. Welcoming them to the community, letting them know they can either go onto the website, use QR code, um, or come in and get it back. Inside for agents, et cetera.
And we talked about, maybe you talked to Gary about putting up QR code.
Correct, yeah, I've already done, done that once, this gets approved.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Do you need a motion? This looks great, by the way.
It really does.
Well done. Really good.
Yeah, need a motion.
Want to live there, except they just don't have a decent municipal.
That's really interesting. I can currently get through the door, my son. It's a better motion.
Okay, let's get the motion going here.
I'll make motion to, uh, approve the, what are we approving?
The resident.
The resident guy.
Yep. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, now we can have some discussion, um. You reference, uh, ordinances in here. So I would just be curious when this is going to be printed.
When are your ordinances coming up?
Well, um, Travis, when, uh, the next. Uh, because we just, um, they didn't come here tonight, did they?
No.
So it'll be, uh, when the board approves them, I believe.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah, and, and, um, I was reading through this, I wish I'd had it on paper, we should print it out, because using my little red pen, we find a few typos, um.
We just call the office with those.
I will be happy to do that.
Is it going to say updated July twenty-third, or? I mean, twenty twenty.
Yeah.
They'll change the date to the current?
Yeah.
I mean, obviously, okay.
I won't roll it out till new years, I can't.
Because then you can make sure that it's updated, if the, any changes.
Change in, uh, the someone who just mentioned. Um. It's on there. Some information, the wind point called regulars, the land and village, contact Jeff Sanders, community kind of consulting before, I need your project.
I think the wildness that makes people coming up, make me a historian, so. We can wait.
But yeah, I mean, it looks really good, there's a lot of good information in here.
Yeah.
Uh, okay.
All right, so we got, apparently it's a motion, I said.
Yeah, we got, we had a motion to approve it with corrections. Okay, that we'll submit, and then we'll make it sure it's in compliance with the new ordinances, um, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose? Same, okay, and motion passes.
And then a lot of communities do have slogans, so we were tasked with coming up with a slogan for our community. We narrowed it down to three, guided by the light, the Lighthouse Village, and life is a breeze at Windpoint. And a committee for the influence of the outside, the Lighthouse Village, in the board.
So would Lighthouse Village be underneath Windpoint, for example, like in parentheses?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Or like on the other side.
Okay, okay.
Full in then, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, for instance.
Oh.
A little. Yeah.
Yeah, by line.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve this. Uh, the light, the Lighthouse Village as our motto.
Second.
Okay, any discussion, we all get it, yeah? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain, motion passes, we have a new motto, slogan, the Lighthouse Village, like it. Okay, police report.
Good evening. We're here. Trying to read through this, because I have. All right, so November was, uh, pretty uneventful for us, these out on the streets, however administratively it was. Um, so you'll see, obviously, the citations, we moved, thanks to the DPW, we moved that traffic sign to the one that we hit the car storage from over to Lake Meadow for the prairie, uh, monitor traffic for a school year. You'll see there, that the, uh, there's an anomaly there, the maximum speed of seventy-two. Yeah, so, uh, unknown what that was, we do have a camera that's installed in that, uh, that ordered, uh, a speed sign, and will actually capture pictures of. But it's usually mostly for tamper, so if somebody comes up to it, starts to either try to remove it or, uh, damage it, it'll snap the picture. However, it does capture a photograph of speeding vehicles, that will tell you that the model that we have is outdated and the clarity is better than, uh, to say that it's not that good. Um, so other than that, though, the, the vehicles have been slowing, obviously, to that, uh, you can, you can see the average, uh, pace during the day and the compliance and the graph. The amount of vehicles. Uh, calls for service, uh, one thing I wanted to point out that, uh. It's kind of ironic, because there's some bits of posts on Facebook regarding, uh, some other agencies, but, uh, we've had to assist Caladonia Police Department, uh, numerous times, they've also assisted us. And obviously, they're sometimes handling call for service when nobody's busy, uh, during the day, so you'll see that they're kind of, they do free call for service, whether we had assists, uh, police department, just for. Five minutes, ten minutes here, sometimes it's, uh, only the assist. Uh, the. I want to see the documentation checks, uh, we've had a. You see that there's shots fired call, I wanted to address that, shots fired calls, whenever it's in the area of our jurisdiction, especially in the corner where we have Caladonia, the city of. And on a day, one, two, one, call in that area, the shot. Call fired, that's, or calls in that area, everybody is sent, so that's not necessarily somebody who was shooting in Windpoint, that's just the trusting. It's everybody converge on that area, that shots are fired, that'll put those shots being fired from. Uh. One other thing, and one, so you'll see, there was a drowning call for service that was submitted, so whenever you see these drowning calls for service. It has to be entered as a drowning on the RAC County Communication Centers, uh, dispatch computer. If, if that call for service is entered into, call as, uh, maybe like a vessel in distress or a stress swimmer. The caliber is not coming, that call for service automatically then tones out several others, the dive team, et cetera. This wasn't an actual drowning, it was one of the residents that believed that they observed somebody that was drowning. Issues trying to swim, it was us, or, uh, they just thought it was important, so those are the things I want.
That's a good question.
Sure.
What's a CIB?
CIB is a wanted person, so we, so we pulled somebody over with a, a warrant.
You know, it's five thirty-eight, though, yeah.
Yeah.
It's a wanted person.
Okay.
So I mean, so we cleared a warrant, so we arrested somebody who, who was wanted. Yeah, yeah, um. Speaking for the car, I just got an update, uh, December nineteenth is when our last parts will be shipped for the new squad. Uh, there's been a struggle with me- metal and plastic, uh, especially with the new order of vehicles. So I just got an update two days ago, that the nineteenth, the last part will be submitted to us, or shipped to the vendor, the vendor, the squad will then be, uh, put out and. Sold up and all its fixing. And we'll note, though, that our new squad will not fit. So as we talk about infrastructure, as we talk about the future, as we talk about a very extensive piece of equipment that houses weaponry for our police officers. Uh, it will have to be parked over by DPW. The officers, I won't talk about this police strategy, but there will not be weapons in that compartment, while that's not being used anywhere sitting over there. So, with that being said. The caveat off of that, every three years, we're audited by the Justice, so. Great deal of November. That was me and David, I started to share, having to go through not just, uh, IT audit, uh, but they also audit physical security of police department. Physical security of evidence, physical security of our equipment, et cetera. So that's why, one of the things that we needed to do was install this door back here, that wasn't a closet door. Secure, hopefully, our little police office. So again, as we talk about futures, we talk about audits, we talk about viability, uh, you'll, you'll see that, uh, we'll have to make some changes if, if we don't hold the rock.
That's the question, um, what about evidence, do we have a secure place for evidence?
Secured, yes, secured to the point where we should be. No.
We have a safe, Goblin. In the police department?
I can't say that.
Okay.
I will tell you that it's not adequate.
We used to have a safe, did you move it?
I don't want that to be public.
Do we need to.
Travis, one other thing, um, the suspicious circumstances, I think it's in that before.
Oh, those are pretty common, somebody, uh, will call in, we'll either get a suspicious vehicle, uh, suspicious person or suspicious circumstance. Suspicious noise or suspicious noise. The cat, those are the categories, and it's all up to dispatch, how they input it, and then it's up to the officer about how that call for service is disposed, uh, disposed. Uh, so that could, that could be anything, I mean, walk through the neighborhood, they found suspicious, and then we get dispatched, uh.
Yeah, we could travel with kids.
Yeah. Uh, we just received our last, uh, grant check for the year, twenty-seven hundred dollars from, uh, that it for, from Montplum, who handles our transportation grant payments. And then we just signed the twenty-twenty-five agreement with Montplum, Caladonia, still then, ourselves for. Grants, uh, starting in January of. It came in a little bit less than we, uh, anticipated, but it doesn't matter, because their other departments do not use it. Uh, and we've always gone over what we've been given, uh, we, we were already assigned for twenty-twenty-five, fifteen thousand, five hundred dollars, but we've always been assigned less. And we've always taken more, it's not an issue.
Are they just doing less because they don't have the, uh?
The full-time departments, I mean, my, my, I, I monitor theirs pretty closely. Uh, because of staffing, the extra traffic controls, uh, it just can't get to. So a lot of that grant money is being returned to the state, two years ago, to be the group of us, fifty-eight thousand dollars, which we turned to the state.
Thank you.
Definitely.
Thank you. Hi, it's my report, um, well, I didn't go to the RCIC's meeting, so I don't have an update on that, but Travis will have one, um.
We did that last one.
Huh? Oh, okay, see, shows you where I'm at, it's been a crazy month, but I do want to tell you, we had a brief lighting here, uh, on Sunday, December first, and I have never seen so many people in this room. It was fabulous, thank you so much to you and your wife, and to Elizabeth, and to Dreah, and to Sherry Heck for everything that they did, um, publicizing it, and then all the food. I couldn't believe how many people were here, it was fabulous, and Caladonia Police Department, they were very eager to deliver Santa this year, they originally got here at five, I'm like, no, five thirty. Uh, and had fires outside, it was so cold, so they had fires out there, it was fabulous, um, so I was, it, it was packed, it was, it was, it was a good time, it was had by all. And, uh, we brought in a different chair this year for Santa, it was my mother-in-law's chair, and, you know, somebody's watching out for her, because when we were taking the chair out, her rosary fell out of it. And she passed away five years ago, so we now have her rosary, so you can't tell me somebody's not watching out for us. But other than that, that's all I have, I hope everybody has a nice holiday. That's my report today. So now, Travis, it's all yours.
Um, a couple things, uh, we have, uh, we do have to take action on resolution number twenty-four, R eleven, leaving the twenty-two for the budget, the capital fund. The wind point to repair the cover, um, so this is finally come through, I have the check, I mean, it's, um, uh, changes, uh, thank you to trustee Goblin for the help on that, too, so. Um, we talked to our auditor as well, make sure it looks good, and, uh, they said, good to go, so that's, that's it.
A motion?
Sure.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution of updating the twenty-twenty-four, the budget for the capital fund of the village, one point for the repair of the cover.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Termit? Okay, we can't, you must be muted.
Can't hear him.
Can't hear a word he's saying.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, I'm in favor of it.
That's okay, I didn't want to, you know, go on to oppose? Uh, abstain, okay, motion pass. Okay.
Can I just ask a point, a question, not a, just, I just want a clarification of my mouse, so what did we wind up actually having to spend for the repair?
That was the fifty-four thousand.
A, a, a lot of the, uh, that's, it was about forty thousand dollars went to the engineer, mainly in twenty-three. Um, because this started failing and all that, and we put it in the budget, um, the remainder, um, but, uh. The check to, uh, GNF was about fifty-four-three, I think, and then, uh, Scott, I know, spearheaded with staff. Um, uh, getting the grant, uh, from Wisconsin DOT of forty-one thousand, so. Uh, thirteen thousand outside the forty in engineering that went up in smoke, because they didn't give us good numbers, and we ended up not doing the full project.
Thank you.
And next would be, um, so, resolution, we will have to take action on resolution, uh, four dash R twelve, declaring official intent to allocate. The American Rescue Plan Act, the Windpoint Capital Improvement Plan for the design of a four-mile road, uh, we have to, um, I mean, this isn't. The actual copy of the contract, but, so we'll also submit the contract, sign in parties, and this just backs up, uh, with our lawyer. Auditor as well, to make sure we're compliant with that, showing that it's, showing the budget as well, as adopted, using our funds as well to help offset those costs, so. This is just showing a resolution at the board brief, this is showing the residents, so, uh, we're paying the rest of the money, because we have allocated by the end of December, which is done already, so. We have already allocated that money, it's done, and won't have to be reported until.
Have a motion?
I'll make.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'll make a motion, uh, that we, um, accept the resolution declaring official intent to allocate proceeds of the American Rescue Plan Act. To Windpoint Capital Program for the design of four-mile road in the amount of hundred thirteen thousand, resolution number twenty-four dash R twelve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstain, motion passes.
Can I ask another question?
Just to note, you said a hundred and fifteen thousand, it's a, yes, it's a little bit warm, but just for the.
Change.
Under thirteen thousand.
Yeah. Well.
Set up a hundred thirteen, rounded off. You know, a hundred thirteen thousand, I said a hundred thirteen thousand, one twelve dollars.
And you know what, I'm looking at this, there's actually a typo in it.
Twelve.
Says a hundred thirteen. Pama four-one dot two zero, there's.
Yep.
That number missing.
In section one, two, her pointed out, we're missing the, uh.
I think that's what she just.
Two, yeah, exactly, you know, so, all right, so.
My question just was, uh, Travis, do you recall, so the engineering study is in excess of this, but this is kind of a push against that study, is that correct, with, um?
So, so we don't know the actual, uh, of what the cost of the road is going to be, because we're just not there yet, could create a cost up to a hundred and ninety dollars a dollars. So this is going to just help set those funds, and then whatever's left will be taken out of the, uh, fine balance applied.
So, do these monies, can they be applied to the engineering, against the engineering?
Yeah, so the, so the monies will go to, yeah.
And I think that was like a hundred and eighteen thousand, or maybe I'm a little blowing that, like every.
Hundred ninety.
It was, that was a hundred and ninety total, it goes to island, uh.
It ever go to, um, artists, and they totally started doing some things on four million, they're out on the field, kind of plotting some. Stuff with GIS and doing some stuff.
And so this is really good news, that's just what I was trying, and then there will be other funds that will probably come into play as well.
Correct, yeah, the village will be saving a lot, maybe the cost of.
Correct, yeah. The, the village will be saving a lot, maybe the cost of the, uh, the water ranges what's going to really drive. Up that, I mean, have to always be paid out as well from that grant received by Comey, as I said, off of, of the design, so that the road itself will be there that will project of the water rates included. Um, item C, so after the body is done, uh, the village board has adopted a provision that says wages, um, and, uh, there's your wage schedule.
Most in the resolution twenty four, R thirteen regarding wages and salaries. The employees for twenty twenty five.
Charlie did.
I'll make sure I get a paycheck.
Travis, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Um. I hate to call you out here, but is your, uh, your rate showing going down?
Well, that would be dependent upon what you approved, your pred, my predecessor, so.
Yeah, that's.
Um, so we do.
Oh, oh, okay, I see. This is budget, budget two, okay. Got it. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Abstain. Okay, motion passes. Okay. Let's see.
Last but not least, Windpoint, yeah, there you go, Arbor Day.
Arbor Day.
It's like Arbor Day in April.
That's what I thought.
Well.
Well, thanks.
Not ours.
Scott was able to, uh. Give us, um, so I'll be, I'm kind of getting the head start of this. Uh, and a tree, the tree is what, uh, I heard I had said from the Tree City USA, so, uh, a reason to get out of trees, so, uh, they let us. Do that and, uh, the replying was in Arbor Day celebration for twenty twenty four. So in twenty twenty five will be our second year of celebrating Tree City USA. So, um, this is just the start. Our application is in review, but, uh, we didn't have to, that this. Don't invite that. Uh, proclamation.
Wait, proclaim April?
Well, we, we didn't do anything though. Twenty four.
Oh, you have to do something for.
Yeah. In order to get that application going. That was their way around. And they, they told us to do that.
Okay.
Okay, and the reason. We're proclaiming every day is for what reason again?
To become a Tree City USA, um, and a lot of municipalities around us have probably been in it for twenty plus years. Um, it's just a nice thing to put out, uh, on your welcome signs, uh, showing that, hey, we're a tree city and we adopt by these regulations and rules that have so many trees and keep on making science and. Make it a better area by extending these trees. The next thing that I'm great about. There's like, there's like spur, there's for City USA, there's five, five, best, and D C, there's all these things, so it's just the start of things.
Okay, I'll make a motion that the village of Windpoint. Proclaims Arbor Day the first twenty twenty four. I'll second it.
Hey. Any discussion? Okay, my last thing. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Abstain. Motion passes.
Uh, you'll see your mentioned tension on the packet that was done to our, there is one more proclamation that I. Is, uh. If somebody would read it by, we call up the employee who recognizes, um, I'm trying to get the other items, but it's, uh, due to possibly take actions on. Recognition for the population, I read a village employee for a while now. There's some recognition for the village and all she's got, so. I'm, you could come up.
You have to stand up, Monica, get all the.
Be happy to.
Someone could read that.
The village of Windpoint proclamation honoring Monica Hern- Hernandez. Whereas Monica Hern- Hernandez has been dedicated, been a dedicated and valued member of the village of Windpoint for many years. tirelessly contributing to the growth and well-being of our community. And whereas through her exceptional work, unwavering commitment and passion for service. Monica has demonstrated a deep care for the residents and the future of the village of Windpoint. Always going above and beyond to ensure that the needs of the community are met. Whereas Monica has exemplified the highest standards of integrity, professionalism and leadership throughout her tenure. Earning the respect and admiration of her colleagues, fellow residents, and all who have had the pleasure of working with her. And whereas Monica's contributions to the village of Windpoint. Have left an indelible mark on the hearts and minds of all who have been touched by her service. And whereas Monica's dedication to public service has not only shaped the present of our village, but has always. But also has laid a strong foundation for its future, setting a remarkable example for others to follow. Now, therefore, the village board, staff and the residents of Windpoint. Do hereby proclaim December twelfth, twenty twenty four, as a celebration of Monica Hernandez and her many years of service. We extend our deepest gratitude for her hard work, continued service, dedication and commitment to our community. Thank you.
So, Agent Scott, and I, um. Sit up, it's an open, it's a welcome race. And, um, presented to Monica and appreciation of many years of dedicated service and devotion we have been toward our village of Windpoint twenty twenty four.
Move in for the photo op.
I hope you're going to share those pictures with us.
Thank you again, Monica, for all your.
That's a motel going in front of each other.
Um, I just, you know, just a couple of words I'm telling you. Obviously, we face challenging years, um, but I think that we are in a great, great spot right now with the staff. We have a great team. Uh, we are facing every challenge that comes our way, yeah, taking care of business. Um, I'm proud of the team that we have. And I, um, am smiling again at home. So I'm.
That makes us happy.
Thank you all for your support. Us. Um, right now, we.
Thanks, good. I just wanted to call here. How many years on?
Twenty eighteen is when I started, so. Twenty eighteen.
Oh, really? It shows.
No, that's.
He's got seniority. He's got seniority.
Yeah.
Well, yeah. Do we have to vote on that motion? We ought to.
I'll make a motion.
There you go, I'll say.
Accept that proclamation. We'll come to stuff.
All in favor? Oppose. Abstain. Motion passes. This is your favorite part.
My favorite part? Well, it is the end.
It is.
All right, here we go. So I'm gonna make a motion, gonna encompass all the consent received file items. Um, item one, village and utility financial reports, November twenty twenty four. Item two, court reports, November twenty twenty four. Item three, police reports, November twenty twenty four. Item four, fire and EMS reports, November twenty twenty four. Item five, building permit reports, November twenty twenty four. And item six, um, Backstrom Woodman Engineering Report, November twenty twenty four. For a second.
Oh, is it? Charlie, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh.
Close. Thank you. Motion passes.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. And, uh, I think we're done. Do we have an emotion to adjourn?
I just made it.
Rob LaFamme, Linda Johnson, second of all in favor.
Aye.
Oppose. Abstain. Motion passes. We are adjourned at five fifty nine. Oh, my.
World record.
I think that is.
It has everything to do with staff being prepared and all of us being prepared and. Thank you and happy holidays, everyone.